Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 30th Halloween edition of the County Council meeting. Hopefully, it's not that scary. You've also shown up at Law Enforcement Appreciation Night. How about that? We appreciate all our law enforcement community here tonight. We'll have more on that to follow. We'll start with our invocation. Bill Sontag from Harvester Christian Church is here to pray for us, and Dave Hammond is going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd stand, remove your hats.
Dear Heavenly Father, first and foremost, I just thank you that we can come to you in this form of prayer and do it with great confidence, knowing that you're going to hear this prayer, knowing that you have the ability to act on this prayer and to actually make things happen because of it, Father. So I just want to thank you for this method of communicating with you. Father, I want to thank you for the brave people here today that stand up for the rights of those that necessarily can't stand up for themselves. Thank you for what they do each and every day during this appreciation day at this meeting. Thank you for what they go out and do each and every day when they put themselves in the harm, in arm's way, Father, for those that most times they probably don't even know. So thank you for them, Father, and thank you for their families. Thank you for what they do, and thank you just for who they are as people. Father, I just pray for wisdom during this meeting time. I pray for courage to listen to what you want to say. I pray for the ability to just put you first in our lives and our thoughts and in our minds as we enter these meeting times and these broad array of discussions that happen at these meetings, Father. I pray that you bless all those that are in charge. I pray that you bless this council of people that are servants, Father, that are servants that are willing to serve in a way that maybe don't get recognized that often. So I just pray that you bless their thought process, bless the decisions they make, Father, and just let them know, number one, that you love them and that you care for them, Father. Father, God bless St. Charles, bless the state of Missouri, bless the United States of America and the entire world, Father, and it's in your Son, Jesus Christ, name I pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
So first item tonight is conditional use permit. We are looking at bill number 4523.
Bill number 4523, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 17-12, for a nursery to Jonathan R. Wingo and Deborah J. Wingo, Joint Revocable Trust, DTD, 1213 2006, property owner.
Understand that the permit has been signed by the Wingos. It has been signed by Robert. Community Development signed this permit as well? Stipulation form, sorry. Stipulation form has been signed, good by all parties involved. Any discussion or comments on this, CUP?
It's in my district, and the Wingos do a fine job running the business, and there's no complaints, and it seems like a very good fit.
Thank you for that. Yes?
On the notes, it has a notation that we should mention, the council has received Exhibit C as well.
Which was in your packet, so you should have had that reviewed. Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none?
Bill number 4523, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 17-12, for a nursery to Jonathan R. Wingo and Deborah J. Wingo, Joint Revocable Trust, DTD, 1213 2006, property owner. Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
CUP is approved. Bill number 4523 passes. We'll move on to public hearing. This is public hearing on traffic regulations. If anyone would like to speak on traffic regulations, this would be your time.
Three people have filled out a speaker's card, so James Boster, do you want to step forward?
Yes, sir. Right there at the podium.
Thank you for allowing me to approach you this evening. My name is James Boster. I'm a trustee for the Idleweiss subdivision, and there's approximately 50 homeowners in there, and we submitted a petition because the intersection is extremely dangerous. There isn't a day that goes by that there isn't a near miss. Six or seven times this year, I found myself sitting in the middle of the street because it's a blind intersection, and you have to commit yourself to go out. And if people coming down Cox Hill Road, even if they're driving the speed limit, you need two sets of eyes to get out safely, and even then, at times, it's extremely dangerous because they're not exactly adhering to the speed limit a lot. And so we requested a three-way stop or some measure to be taken to make it safe enough for us to get out without risking our lives and our property on a daily basis.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Peggy Senior.
Hi, Peggy.
Hi. I actually live in the same subdivision as Mr. Boster does, so I have... May I hand these out to you guys or let you share?
Sure.
The top is sort of wider angle with the zoomer now. The red X is our subdivision, and the blue arrow is the Bluff subdivision, which comes a little bit into play. So, my name's Peggy Senior. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening, and I'm a trustee of Village Idleweiss, and we have 49... Sorry, I'm nervous. Forty-nine homes in our subdivision, and we only have one entrance. So we're here to ask you to establish a three-way stop at the intersection of Cox Hill Road and White Rose Lane. The biggest concern with the highest risks we have in our subdivision is making a left turn out of our subdivision onto Cox Hill Road. Due to the close proximity of curves to the north and south, the entrance, the vision is obscured. In addition, the entrance to the Bluff subdivision is located to the south of our entrance, adding additional traffic and complication to this intersection. Another complication in this intersection is the shared left-turn lane that extends from White Rose Lane south to the entrance to the Bluff subdivision. And on the lower picture, where it's blown up a little bit, you can see that shared left-turn lane. So the left-turn lane is a shared lane that provides access onto White Rose Lane and Bluff View Court. Cars that are headed south on Cox Hill wanting to turn left onto Bluff's View Court regularly enter the left-turn lane at White Rose Lane or earlier, allowing no room and creating a danger for cars that are headed north wanting to turn left onto White Rose Lane. Currently, there are no traffic controls from Tower Road to Harvester. With cars going the speed limit of 35 miles an hour and faster, cars approaching our entrance from both directions give drivers little time to safely exit our subdivision. So we ask for your consideration for the safety of our families for the three-way stop.
Thank you.
Questions?
Not right now.
No? Okay. Thank you.
And the third one that fills out a card, Melissa. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Hi, Melissa.
Hello. Thanks for letting me speak today. I'm speaking for the Lexington Square subdivision. We are requesting stop signs. I've been in the community for about two years now. I have two small little boys, a single mom, and there's no stop signs. Like, these people drive 40 miles an hour coming down the street. The bus stop's actually right across the street from my house. I was standing there, almost got hit by a car, standing on, just waiting for the bus. We've approached drivers. They, I mean, they just don't care. I've even called the police. We've, I mean, some neighbors have followed people to the extent, you know, just trying to get them to slow down. I know it's an older subdivision, so a lot of people aren't used to kids being back in the neighborhood because, you know, everybody's grown out. Now, some people are moving in with young kids. I mean, in the row of where I live, there's at least 10 kids right there in that small little house, so we're just asking some stop signs be put in. I actually live on the main drag. I would actually like a speed bump there just to slow people down because it's a turn onto Musket, which I actually would stop, you know, hopefully help people to slow down a little bit because it is the main drag into the subdivision, and that's the only way out, too, so.
Okay.
So, thank you.
What street was that again?
It's the Lexington Square. I live off of Lexington. It's Lexington and Musket, which is the main, pretty much the main drag for the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seems to be a speed problem, Chief. We may want to make note of that. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else to speak on traffic regulations tonight? Yes, ma'am?
I don't know. I didn't pull out a car.
Come on down. It's serious now. She took her coat off.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. So we just moved in probably about a year and a half ago to Idleweiss, and we also pull out... I have three teenagers that are getting ready to drive, so I am extra sickened by the blind spot that comes out when you pull out of the subdivision. It's pretty treacherous. There's been many times that they've been in the car with me, and I've had a slam on my brakes or commit. I think some other people brought that up, too, and it's really important to me, for my family, and, you know, as moving into this neighborhood, we love the neighborhood, and we just, you know, would hope that you would look at all the facts and see that it is really a blind curve coming out trying to get out of the subdivision.
And a lot of it's just the foliage and the trees that have grown up since then. You just can't see around the curve, and so even if they're going to the speed limit, it's just very, very hard to see. Even experienced drivers, very hard to make that judgment on when it is to just get on the gas and stay into it or to kind of hesitate. You really don't have much time to make that decision. So we've been there a year and a half, and the time we've been there, it's pretty treacherous. Like, it really is. You have to be a very experienced driver, and you have to commit to it or not to commit to it. And the fact that we have two kids getting ready to start driving, like, it's a hesitation at that aspect to make them, let them do this.
That's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else to speak on traffic regulations?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is in my district, and I have been out there working with these folks, and what they tell you is true. It is a very treacherous entrance and exit, so I'm in favor of putting something in that would help these folks. I don't know if it's a stop sign or mirrors or what, but we need to look at this and address it for safety's sake.
Excellent. Any other comments? All right. With that, we will close the traffic regulations public hearing. We'll move on to public comments. So just so you know, if you're new to public comments, we normally take... You get three minutes to speak. At the end of three minutes, the alarm will go off. I'll ask you to wrap up your comments and have a seat. To be fair to all the speakers that we have, we try to go one for, one against on every subject to go back and forth. We normally do three on each side as max. So with that, we will start with our first speaker of the night, and it is...
I have one speaker, Holland Wilcox.
Thank you, gentlemen. Tonight, you're voting on the PUD at my property at number one Creekwood Court, and I just signed in case there was some questions or additional information that you need about it. So I've given pretty much all the information in previous meetings.
Yes.
And just wanted to know if there was anything you needed to know before your vote.
Okay. When we get to that bill, we'll call you after we have the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Our only speaker?
That's it. Yes, sir.
Well, with that, we'll close public comments. Move on to oral report.
No oral report, Mr. Chairman.
So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is passed, which brings us down to Resolution 1713.
Resolution 17-13, Spencer, by council as a whole, a resolution recognizing, honoring, and supporting the dedication of law enforcement officers in St. Charles County, Missouri, for their recent efforts within St. Charles County, whereas law enforcement officers are routinely called to serve and protect their fellow citizens by responding to horrendous and tragic events and by putting themselves in physical danger and often perform their duties with great sacrifice to themselves and to their families. And whereas recent events throughout St. Charles County and the region have required involvement from the region's law enforcement officers, including the county and city of St. Louis, as well as the county and city of St. Charles, to protect the people, their property, and their constitutional rights, including recent protests that occurred in downtown St. Charles, Missouri. And whereas during recent instances of civil unrest, law enforcement officers have admirably protected the rights of individuals to exercise their rights to peacefully assemble and express their opinions while also protecting the rights of other citizens and property owners in the area. And whereas the response to the recent protest events required significant planning and coordination by the St. Charles City and County Police Departments, as well as the Sheriff's Department, the Department of Corrections, and other law enforcement and public safety agencies throughout St. Charles County. And whereas the men and women of the St. Charles City and County Police Departments, Sheriff's Department, Department of Corrections, and other law enforcement and public safety agencies within this county serve the citizens of this county honorably and with professionalism and often do not receive the thanks and admiration that they deserve. Now therefore be resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby expresses its sincere pride in and appreciation for the men and women of the law enforcement and public safety agencies within St. Charles County in recognition of their commitment to the citizens of this county to upholding the law and protecting all individuals during recent episodes of civil unrest. Section 2, the St. Charles County Council further expresses its continuing confidence in and support of the work these men and women do both during civil unrest and during the work they do each and every day.
Any questions or comments on this resolution? Mr. Brazel.
I would just like to say that we're very proud of our law enforcement agency and all the people who participate in that, in that industry, if you want to call it that, but we wanted to recognize you folks because in some areas, parts of the country, other regions, it doesn't seem to be recognized like you should, and so we wanted to make a point that we really do appreciate you folks, and we have absolute gratitude for what you do.
Anyone else?
One other thing I wanted to add is I was extremely impressed by the coordination between the different departments. Everybody came together. Everybody seemed to know what all the different team members were doing, and we had a very coordinated plan of how to address this, and it worked out very well for, not only for the protesters, but for the other people that were in the area at the same time. So, again, thank you very much.
As a father and a father-in-law of police officer and officers, I was very proud to put my name on this resolution. Serve and protect is their duty, and a lot of times, the extended family really worries about them. There's been times whenever my daughter's driven through high crime areas that her mom and I really worried whether she was going to be safe or not. This is a dedication that these people have, and as far as what they're paid, they're not paid enough for the duty that they give, the service that they give, and also the dedication. I mean, they work all kinds of hours. I mean, they don't, they work shift hours. It's just not like a normal job. I mean, these people really deserve our respect, and that's why I was proud to put my name on the resolution.
Any other comments? I would also point out special thanks to Emergency Management and Emergency Communications for all the stuff that they do. I mean, to get everybody involved takes a lot of coordination, and I know we've got our new emergency operations center that is well underway. We looked at the new cubes. You'll be happy to Jeff. We looked at the new cubes that just got approved on the consent agenda, which is nice. So I'm looking forward to all of that, but we've spent a lot that's happened in the county over the last year or so, not just the protester stuff, but a lot of disasters that we've had to deal with over the last year, and you guys have done a great job all the way across in all our departments of law enforcement. So when Mr. Brazel brought up this idea, it was a great opportunity to pause and say thanks for all you do. So with that, I would invite a final vote.
Resolution 17-13, a resolution recognizing, honoring, and supporting the dedication of law enforcement officers in St. Charles County, Missouri, for their recent efforts within St. Charles County. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Resolution 1713 passes. Chief, Chief Larry, Sheriff, if I could get all of you to come up here. County Executive, if you've joined me, I'd like to present you your...
You guys... Hey, Mike, if you want to say anything or...
I'm sorry. That was completed there. How about that? Do you want to say something? Jeff, Chris, you guys will come up here. Our chief of operations.
Well, on behalf of all of us, and the men and women we serve, we understand we've worked for you folks, we've worked for you folks around the clock. We chose it professionally. We know the risks that come with it. It's really nice when we get the phone calls and the officers and the men and women get a pat on the back. We know you care. For us, that's what it's all about, so we thank you for giving us the privilege of serving you.
I'd just like to add to that, that because some agencies aren't able to accept the gratitude that we get in our county, I just want to personally thank you for everything, Charles City Police Officer.
I would just say it's our level of privilege to serve and thanking you for this recognition and also organize, and I'm very proud to be able to stand with these folks that work well together in teamwork. That doesn't happen everywhere for this county and in this area. It's just great, and I appreciate everyone's support.
I just want to say thanks to the guys that are here. Just stand up for a minute. I mean, it's nice for us to stand up and get our pictures, but these are the guys that actually work.
Can we get the big hat and photo?
We get the formal picture.
Jeff, will I?
I think the last time, we were all jammed into command, so...
Sliding the guy.
I thought those guys out there.
All right. Let me take a couple. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
So we will move on to bills for final passage. We will start with bill number 4520. Bless you.
Bill number 4520, an ordinance approving the amended planned unit development of Park Charles South, Platteau, Lot 250, to allow a front yard setback of 24.5 feet for a carport as per application AVR 17-01.
Any questions or comments on this?
Yes, I... This is in my district. Mr. Wilcox, if you'll come up, we have a couple of questions. First of all, you know, I think we've all looked at this and discussed it, you know, at the first meeting a little bit. It really kind of puts us in a tough spot here.
Yes.
The truth of the matter is, there was a lot of things that went wrong here from the very start, and, you know, where the blame should be pointed or where it shouldn't, I think, is really, at this point, really kind of somewhat irrelevant. We have to decide, you know, whether or not we're going to, you know, issue this PUD to you. Obviously, the carport, boat port, is certainly not in the right place, okay? There are some other concerns, I think, that we have specifically about the, you know, the completion of your building. I think the last meeting, you mentioned that you were planning on making some changes. Is that correct, on the building itself?
The building and code enforcement, they informed me that metal sides weren't allowed on the side of the building. The metal roof is okay, and they said I'd have to put a different siding on the side of the building, and I agreed to that.
Okay. You know, one of the problems I see here is, number one, I know you've incurred a great deal of expense up to this point. I also realize, though, that, you know, it's kind of dangerous for us to start setting precedents and setting the various building codes that we have aside. One of the things I'd like to see is, you know, a response from your neighbors, how they, you know, view your particular building once you adhere to the recommendations that have been made to you about finishing the building. And I really, I really think we're in a position here where I would kind of, in some respects, I'd like to maybe table this bill and see if we can, you know, have you get together with your neighbors, explain to them what you're going to be doing, how you're going to, you know, make your building more, I guess, visually appealing so that the neighbors, you know, feel like that the building somewhat fits into the scheme of things. Now, you know, obviously, if this building was in the proper place and you met all the codes, there would be no, they would have no voice, okay?
Well, I'd like to explain something that's very relevant right now, is you have in possession, or you did last time, you had two letters, one for and one against. The one against was, the person that sent the one against actually contacted me. He's a good friend. He's the neighbor behind me, and he apologized for doing it, but he told me why, and he said that he didn't particularly like sitting on his back deck and looking out and seeing the back of my carport. And I explained to him, I said, "Well, the legal issue here is really the setback." And I said, "If we go..." I explained to him, "If we follow the code, that he's going to get a much better view of my building than he has now." Right now, the carport is exactly alongside of his garage, where he, it's the least encro- encroachment on his property. Whenever he, when he's sitting in his living room, he can't see my carport. It's right against the garage, just like a normal garage. We move it back 24.5 feet, whenever he sits on his porch, he's going to look over and all he's going to see is a carport. So I asked him, actually, I said, "It would be in your best interest to rescind, you know, your letter of, you know, being against it." I asked the neighbors previously to stay neutral because there was an issue between, there was a mistake made with planning and zoning, and I asked them to stay neutral. I could have rallied and got several letters in my support, but I didn't. So you only received two letters.
Correct.
Okay. But I do want you to know, the guy that wrote the letter against the carport is under the impression that everything I have had to be ripped out and put back into its original position. And I explained to him that I did have rights to my property. We do have a right to have two driveways on our corner lots, and we do have rights to have carports and that nature, and he wasn't aware of that. And he wasn't aware also that the carport was going to be moved even further back into the yard. So I just want to make you aware of that.
Yes, sir. Were you planning on putting a landscaping around the boat port or carport or whatever we want to call it now?
I completely re-landscaped... I completely re-landscaped my yard whenever I put that pad in. I had two tandem loads of dirt put in with a skid steer, had it re-seated, restrawed. I planned on taking my back fence down, which is the only fence I have left, so he, in the past, he wanted to put up a privacy fence there. He has a privacy fence on three sides. So I said, well, I'll remove the chain-linked fence, you'll be able to put your regular 10-foot-high wooden fence up. He's already planted two trees-
10-foot-high?
-that are probably 15-foot tall, that are right in front of the carport to block the carport's view from where it's at right now. So he's already taken some measures for that.
Mr. Cronin?
I agree with Mr. Hollander on this one. I think that more work needs to be done before I'm going to approve this. I also have an issue as well with this, the fact that I served two years on Planning and Zoning Commission, know how hard those folks work. For a little bit, they get paid. And six of those Planning and Zoning Commissioners voted against us, only two approved. So I think there's a long ways to go on this before I'm comfortable with voting for it. So I think Mr. Hollander was spot on. I think the best thing to do would be to table it, and I'm willing to put that motion in, Terry wants to. And I think table it, and I think this gentleman needs to work with his neighbors and county staff and to address the concerns that Mr. Hollander pointed out very clearly.
Mr. Brazel?
The issue at hand here is a setback, plain and simple. Has nothing to do with the building. And to put that on him is irrelevant to why he's before us tonight. We're here just to talk about the setback. That's the only thing we're concerned about. And to have him go talk to his neighbors about the structure is putting the cart before the horse, because why he does all that work, we don't know if he's still going to pass. How can you ask him to do that? So the issue is the setback. So you've got a gentleman who's got an immaculate-looking house, his yard is, you saw his pictures, his house is in very nice condition, he does a very good job taking care of it, he's a well-respected community leader in his neighborhood. Regardless of if he got his permit or intentionally didn't get it or whatever, we heard this story, it sounds like there were some mistakes made by contractors and whatnot. He got his highway department permit, he tried to do what he thought he was supposed to do. Guys, this is a carport, it's not that big a deal. I mean, he's before us, he's following, he comes to the council to try to get the variance or whatever you want to call it, and that's what he's doing. So I'm in favor of giving him the variance and putting this thing to bed, because the county, the billing department, Jared came up here last week, said he's going to make him do what he has to do to fit the billing code, but that has nothing to do with what we're talking about. We're talking about setback. And on a corner lot, if it wasn't a corner lot and it was a side lot, it'd be 20 feet anyway, wouldn't it, or 25? And Dave, these are some of the things we're talking about in a ad hoc. It's like, it doesn't make a lot of sense, you know? So you're making this man push, tear his building down or go through all this nonsense for a 14-by-20 carport that doesn't look that bad? Like I said, the looks of it is not our, that's on the billing department. So I'm in favor of getting this man on his way and getting this off our, off the table, because it's not that big of a deal.
Mr. Hammond?
I disagree, and I'm not supportive of this, of this variance for this setback.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
So if you go through planning and zoning and you lose six to two-
Uh huh.
When you're coming before the county council and you're asking the county council to override a planning and zoning's negative vote, why would you ask your neighbors to stay neutral and not write letters of support? Because if they were supporting you, that would definitely be a feather in your cap and make you look a whole lot better.
Well, I'm glad you asked that.
Thank you.
So I'll give you the whole, the whole story then, was, the carport is exactly where Planning and Zoning Office told me to put it. I called in on April 28th-
Hang on, let me, let me pause.
In office?
We've heard, we've heard that, that part of the story.
Yes.
That's, that's not my question. My question was, why didn't you ask your neighbors to write the letters of support when you knew you had one for and one against, and you knew that you're asking for variance where the Planning and Zoning already voted you down? So why wouldn't you ask for your neighbors to support you?
Seems odd, doesn't it?
Which would be why I'm asking the question, yes.
Because I went in private quarters into Planning and Zoning Office and met with members of the Planning and Zoning Office, and we agreed that if I didn't throw anybody under the bus at the Planning and Zoning Office and sent out a letter that was neutral, that they would go ahead and approve of what, where the carport was. And what happened is the information got above their head and was turned down, and then I wound up back in front of the Planning and Zoning Department and in front of you. That is exactly why I sent out, why else would I send out a letter of neutrality saying, you have the letter, it shows, oh, it's nobody's fault, it was an accident? I could have easily told them exactly what happened. But the Planning and Zoning, the employees in the Planning and Zoning Department, we made a behind-the-door closed deal, and I got thrown under the bus.
Okay.
And I was trying to protect, as you know, I'm also a government employee in the similar position. I've been up there three times, this is my sixth meeting, three times I've been to the Planning and Zoning Department and said, I have enough evidence on this to where I'm trying to protect your office. If we can, if we can fix this quietly, without anything, without it going to court, without me suing you-
Sure.
-showing you my court rec, showing you my documents from A T and T for 45 minutes and everything-
Okay.
And suing you for time, labor, and materials, et cetera, that maybe we can just call the, I believe that 99, I know, I do the same work, 99.99% of the time, I certainly believe that the Planning and Zoning Department does an excellent job. My, my house is an anomaly. Everything that could have went wrong in a six-month period, this was a year and a half ago.
I think we're all in agreement with you on that one.
Yeah.
That's not a question.
I've been to court, this is the sixth time I've been before a group. Everything that could have went wrong, went wrong.
Okay.
Yes.
County Executive?
Would you ask who the employees were that you-
Yeah, could you tell us who the employees were?
I would rather, I would rather not do that.
You need allusions to backroom deals, and that doesn't sit well with us.
Okay. I talked to David Estudo and Ellie Marr.
Okay.
It's just good not to have backroom dealings in government. We prefer for it to be all out front, so that'd be good.
Well, I prefer not to throw anyone under the bus.
I'm just looking for, for your position.
Okay.
Mr. Hollander, do you have a recommendation here?
Well, you know, first of all, I think, you know, if our community development department said, hey, listen, you know, if they had to come forward, say, we made a mistake here, we, we gave this gentleman the wrong information, and we went from there, we've not heard that from, from anyone in, in county government. Sure. And that puts us in a position where we, you know, we have to believe in our, you know, employees and what they, and what they stand for. I, I think what I would like to do here is to, is to go back to my original idea, see if we can, you know, my point is, if you, if we force you to move this building, which I think is going to be hugely expensive, the neighbors are still going to end up with their building, okay?
Right.
It'll be in the right place.
Might actually make it worse.
Yes, it, as you said, I think the neighbor that you talked to-
Yeah, he doesn't want it there.
Okay. So if we can, if we can get some assurances that they feel that what you've done and what the community development, you know, following the various kinds of siding and to finish the lower, lower part of the building, if I remember correctly, the-
All I was told is you just couldn't have metal siding. I could put vinyl siding up or whatever, it wouldn't take too much to bring it into building code. My neighbors, I have very good relations, even the guy that sent the letter against me, I have a good relation with him.
Right.
And I even sent him a letter of apology. I, I have no one in the whole neighborhood that I have a bad relationship with, and even after this is all said and done, I will continue to be friends-
Yes, sir.
...with the person behind me.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to table this. I think this is the best opportunity that you're going to have-
Well, I'm not really understanding what you want me to do from when I walk out of this room. Do you, do you want me to work on a building that is no longer in zone, that is not in zone yet?
I want you to, I think that what my idea would be is for you to get together with community development, make sure that you, that you know what they need for you to, to make this building come up to code. I would think you would then take that, those ideas to your neighbors and say, this is what it's going to end up looking like once I do all the things that I need to do. And if that's done, then I think that we, as a group, can say, okay, I think this is a situation where we can grant the P U D. Now, you know, my own personal opinion is if we go ahead and not table this and vote on this, I think that's not going to, my own feeling is, I don't think that's going to be a consequence that you're going to, you know-
So if I take it to my neighbors, do you want letters from my neighbors of approval? What, what do you want?
Mr. Cronin?
I think, sir, you should look at the staff report that they sent along with this to us, because you also got another issue. It says additionally, section 405, the ordinance in St. Charles County require all accessory non-residential buildings over 200 square foot, except accessory structures and stables in the R R District must be constructed with building materials and designed architecturally to be in substantial compliance with the primary structure. Which means you've got to make this thing look like your house, okay? Now, maybe if you want it to look like the way it looks, you've got to get another variance. I don't know. I think that's something you need to work with our staff on. I would suggest you read this letter that's in a staff report that's available online real closely, and then talk to the folks at community development and try to work something out with your neighbors and bring it back for the council, okay?
So I'd like to make a motion to table this particular ordinance and then proceed from that point.
Motion's been made to table.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Bill has been tabled. Move on to bill number forty-five twenty-one.
Bill number forty-five twenty-one, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R one D single-family residential district as per application R Z seventeen dash ten.
I'm sorry, sir. Will I receive something in the mail instructing me what to do? Or will I just-
Call and talk to our planning department.
Pardon me? Can they send me something, legal documentation?
And you can, and you can-
The meeting minutes were probably sufficient.
Pardon me?
She can send you the meeting minutes, that'd probably be good enough.
Yes. Okay, if that'd be fine. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on bill forty-five twenty-one? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R one D single-family residential district as per application R Z seventeen dash ten. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number forty-five twenty-one passes. Move on to bill number forty-five twenty-two.
Bill number forty-five twenty-two, an ordinance accepting plans and specifications, ordering the improvements be made, setting forth a proposed assessment role, and authorizing interim financing for the improvements for the Gudermuth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and the Gudermuth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District Two.
Any questions or comments on forty-five twenty-two? Seeing none?
An ordinance accepting plans and specifications, ordering the improvements be made, setting forth a proposed assessment role, and authorizing interim financing for the improvements for the Gudermuth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and the Gudermuth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District Two. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill number forty-five twenty-two passes. On to bill number forty-five twenty-four.
Bill number forty-five twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a Fifth Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for collection of taxes.
Any questions or comments about bill number forty-five twenty-four? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, real quick, Mike.
Sir?
Are we doing anything different than what we did last year and the year before? Or is it the same?
The city of St. Charles has done another phase of the new town-
Okay, so added on to it.
For the extras, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a Fifth Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for collection of taxes. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes. Bill number forty-five twenty-four passes. On to bill number forty-five twenty-five.
Bill number forty-five twenty-five, an ordinance setting the 2018 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and dental insurance benefits with Lincoln Financial Group for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Any questions or comments on forty-five twenty-five?
Mike, again-
Yes, sir.
I just, I have a real problem with Davis Vision, so I'm personally going to be voting no on it. I don't think that's a company that, that we should be dealing with, so I'm going to vote no on it.
But if, should we have, should we table this and have a conversation about this? Have you got a real, real factual problems with it?
Staff has looked at it, they don't, they think that Davis does a fine job, or an adequate job, anyway. I don't, so I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, I know, but if you're, if you got information we should know, don't you think we should talk about it, maybe not up here, but have a conversation?
We can do that. Make the motion to table the bill then.
Second.
I'd like discussion on this, please.
Mr. Cronin?
Is this, by tabling this, is this going to put the county in any kind of bind? Okay?
We're going to be in a huge bind because the employees come in for the benefits fair next week.
Could we pass this and then with the, with the understanding that we're going to talk about Davis Vision at a later date, Mike?
Yeah, this isn't actually awarding anything to Davis Vision, this is setting the rates to the employees and how much of it we pay and how much of it they pay. So-
I thought you said that it continued their contract.
Mike, hey, Mike, with the information you have, is it public information you can share with us or not right now?
It's, I'll tell you that they, they did a inadequate job of making the glasses for not only myself, but members of my family as well. We ended up having to go and buy them on the outside, outside of our plan to get glasses that, that worked. It's that simple.
But, just to be clear with Joanne saying, the, the contract is already there, we're just setting the rates.
Yes, the contract, this Davis program was bid a year ago this time.
Is this a continuation of that contract?
Yes, yes, it is, sir. And the rights were frozen for a three-year period. But yes, it was a, it was a contract.
Is their term up?
It was a, it was a one-year contract with the option to renew for two additional years.
So is the one-year contract up?
Yes.
So this is a renewed?
So it is a renewal of a, of a contract.
An existing contract. But as Joanne says, this was to set the rates, which in this case are the same as they were last year, and puts us in a bind with the entire fringe benefit package being on the line come, would have been Wednesday, I guess, when open enrollment starts.
Right. And I brought this concern up several months ago, and it, it didn't go anywhere, so.
Mr. Cronin?
As a point of order, okay, for Mr. Hazelwood, okay? If this contract was previously approved by the council with an automatic renewal provision, okay, does this, the council have to be consulted each time that contract is then renewed?
You would have brought in one-year contract and two optional renewals. Right. And you approved those two options.
We approved the renewals?
The option for the county to turn our numbers to real. The only thing before you is setting the rates. The contract is set through the-
It's, it's purely the setting of the rates, that the notation in the whereas is, is on each of these, whether it's Lincoln Financial, or whether it's the various life insurance, Davis Vision, et cetera, is explaining when they were awarded, and then the, that there was renewal for two additional years that was accepted in the, in the original award.
So administrative staff was able to- So, administrative staff was able to?
Not to, not to accept.
16 Davis Vision for 17, so was this the first year of Davis Vision?
1117 was the first year, was.
And so, 18 and 19, so.
When we made that, when we approved it in 16, we took our ability to, to have an influence on that off the table.
Do you remember?
Only administrative decision then to renew the contract?
Well, Ed, do you remember what the terms for termination of the contract are?
What the exact wording was? No, I don't, right at the top.
We can get you that, if that's what you want to do.
It was a one-year contract, though, with renewals.
With two renewals.
Two renewals.
But that, instead of doing a three-year contract, that leads me to believe that there was an opportunity then to not renew the contract. So, who made the decision to renew the contract?
The renewals are automatic unless we enter into a termination, and that's what I was just asking of this hearing, remember?
When was the termination time period?
That's what I just asked. We just got to look it up.
So, we would have to give them notice to terminate it next year.
Right.
Okay.
Does that sound right yet?
Yes.
At some point here, we'd give notice to terminate.
Likely, likely it was 60 days.
60 days.
And that's coming off the top.
Well, let's find that.
Or, or a material breach.
Let's find that out tomorrow.
I'll withdraw the motion to table. It's, it's already, we're past that timeframe, I'm pretty sure. It's, again, it was a problem that we had. I don't like them. I'm not going to vote for them. I don't do business with, with people that, that don't fulfill their contract. So, they're done, as far as I'm concerned.
So, are you saying, Mike, that the fact that this is before us is irrelevant, anyway?
It's irrelevant. It's the termination window clause that we had to hit for this. So, if we, if we wish to not renew that coverage, we have to let them know before next year's terminate, before next year's renewal period.
So, I will bring it up before next year's renewal.
Mr. Cronin.
Ed, have you had complaints with this supplier from other county employees?
We've had one other complaint, sir, and that was a matter of they had mailed in a, for reimbursement of the claim. I think it was registered mail, certified mail. Somebody at Davis signed for it. It got lost in the shuffle. We got copies of the paperwork and they turned the claim within 10 days to the employee's satisfaction.
Okay, so with 1,100 employees and probably at least that many dependents, I wouldn't think, you know, a couple complaints are absolutely horrendous. Maybe Mike needs to go back and give them a little knuckle sandwich, Eric. All right?
So, Michael, I'm.
My doctor doesn't want to use them anymore, so.
I'm curious what you said, is you said you brought this up to detention of someone and nothing happened. What, can you explain that a little bit?
It's still, the, it wasn't, I was not made aware that we had a renewal timeframe that we could take action on, at this level, at this board, to not renew their contract. I wasn't made aware of that.
Well, it seems to me that there's no point even having it up on the agenda if we have no, we're not doing anything with it.
But the majority of what we're doing here is setting rates for insurance benefits.
Setting the rates.
This is not just about an optical renewal. This is, this is a whole lot more. This is about setting the insurance benefit rates for everything else. So, that's just one particular point.
One piece of it, which is built into the entire.
Exactly.
Package.
It's kind of tough to pull the strawberry out once you make the smoothie, you know? Sorry.
I don't know where that's going.
It's an analogy my regional vice president used the other day. Once it all gets mixed together, it's tough to pull that one back out. I'm like, it's point taken.
It is. I, I wish I would have known that the renewal was, was our, the timeframe for the renewal is already gone, and I wasn't made aware of that.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
I'm just upset because I got to get new glasses. I hope it'll have to go through the same experience Mike does or did.
All right, so any further discussion on this point?
Find out, find out if they get done by Davis.
Seeing none, let's call the roll.
An ordinance setting the 2018 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and dental insurance benefits with Lincoln Financial Group for county employees, elected officials, and retirees. Councilmember Klinghammer?
No.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4525 passes, and Ms. Lykem, I appreciate that look on your face when I talked about you can't pull the strawberry out. That was pretty funny. We will move on to bills for introduction. On to bill number 4526.
Bill number 4526, requested by Heather Smith and Judge Joel Brett, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 to add the position of Assistant Court Clerk II to the municipal court and increasing the time for the municipal judge.
Any questions or comments on 4526? Seeing none, move on to 4527.
Bill number 4527, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 to add management of the day-to-day engineering operations of the Gateway Greenlight Program to the Office of Roads and Traffic.
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
I spoke with Ms. Brower about this today, and I thought I'd just tell you essentially what she told me. Essentially, by adding this additional person to manage Gateway Greenlight Program, two things happen. We save about $75,000 a year in consulting engineering fees to, that we're paying outside vendors, and this, and that will also give her, this new person will have, have, do a better job than what she thinks is currently being done, working with the cities to alleviate congestion problems all over the county. The third benefit of it is that she thinks she'll have a lot more time to work on pursuing grant money to improve our roads in the county. So, I, at first, I, I looked at this a little bit sideways, but after speaking with her, I think she did a great job by trying to figure out a way to make the Gateway Greenlight Program more beneficial to the county, and at the same time, work with the cities to alleviate traffic problems throughout the county, and maybe have some time to work on additional grants specifically for Council District One, which is all the growth's going, and we need extra road help. So, she did a good job explaining it to me, and I'm fully supportive of this.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I had one quick question.
Go ahead.
I know we're going to save $75,000 in outside services, but what is, and we're going to have this person just come full-time, add a full-time employee, so what's, what is exactly the offset? We're going to save 75, but.
She told me it would be somewhere around 110, and the additional monies would be paid for county transportation tax. So, that's what I was told. So, the, the net cost is about 35 grand a year to free up her up for a lot of time, paid from county transportation tax, and the benefits to the city. I did talk to the mayor of Wentzville tomorrow, this morning, about this, and he's pretty excited about it because he thinks that there's a lot of potential with that system, that they just can't get worked out with their city staff, where this new person could help them get that done.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill 4528.
Bill number 4528, requested by Dave Todd, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorized in the county executive to execute an agreement with the city of Weldon Spring for certain law enforcement services, including patrol services and enforcement of certain municipal ordinances related to police services.
Any questions or comments about 4528? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4529. Oh, sorry.
Is this any different from our previous contract with Weldon Spring or?
No, just renewal.
Plus, less inflation.
Okay. Thank you.
Careful with that just renewal comment after our earlier discussion. We're not going there anymore.
I can't see you.
We'll move on to bill 4529.
Bill number 4529, requested by Dave Todd, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the Missouri State Highway Patrol regarding the transmission, receiving, and dissemination of the information contained in the Missouri Uniform Law Enforcement System, MUELs, and National Crime Information Center, MCIC, systems of records for files relating to stolen vehicle files and stolen license plate files.
Any questions or comments on 4529? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4530.
Bill number 4530, requested by Dave Todd, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance, ordinance 16-104 to accept a grant to fund a non-merit grant position within the St. Charles County Police Department and amending section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, concerning the Personnel Administration Plan related to this position.
Mr. Cronin.
About midnight last night, while I was reading all the fine print in the packet, I came across this, and it lit me up like a Christmas tree. And it's a shame the cameras are gone now because I just really want to commend Mr. Todd about the fine work his cybercrime department's doing. They got this grant, okay?